All right, we are live.
Great. All right, welcome to the Millville Planning Board meeting Monday, October 26th. We have all board members present tonight. We'll start off with, if everyone had a moment to look over the meeting minutes from the September 28th meeting, would hear a motion to accept.
Take a motion to accept and approve the meeting minutes for September 28th.
I'll second them.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Right. Um, if it's all right with you guys, I'm gonna hop around just a little bit. I want to talk about the CMR PC delegate appointment. It's that time of year where we need to pick somebody to be the CMR PC representative. The expectation is, and Gabe, jump in here, but that there are several meetings throughout the year, like four meetings or so, that we have the opportunity to be a delegate on.
Yeah, there are four quarterly meetings for fiscal year 21. And so, the next meeting for fiscal year 21 would be November 12th, and then January 14th, March 11th. And then there's an annual meeting tentatively scheduled for June 10th of 2021. And then for, you know, for the next fiscal year, I assume the next meeting would be sometime in September 2021.
Gotcha. I know that the commitment has been kind of tough in the past, but I don't know how long they're gonna keep doing this for, but at least right now, the meetings have been virtual, which have been pretty easy to to hop on and listen to. The last one was actually really interesting. I jumped on. I don't know, Gabe, if you have any other information you wanna add about the meetings as they're hosted?
Um, I mean, I can read from the letter if anyone wants a refresher.
Sure thing.
So, CMR PC, our mission is fourfold: addressing growth and development issues that extend beyond community borders, maintaining the district certification for federal transportation improvement funds, providing technical knowledge and resources to assist local government in addressing land use, economic, or environmental problems, and building strong working relationships with member communities, state and federal officials, as well as area legislative representatives. And we bring in millions of dollars in grant funds into the communities every year. Delegates and alternates are a vital link with your planning commission that enables us to deliver support services, to compete for discretionary grant funds, to identify community needs in transportation and land use, and to foster subregional cooperation through shared services and procurement. Communities with active delegates and alternates fare better in receiving a return on your investment than those who fail to communicate local needs or to link up with our programs. In these financially challenging times, it is critical both for the commission and your community to maintain this link. And so, the representation is weighted by population, and so Millville is entitled to one delegate and one alternate. And the delegate must be a member of the planning board and a resident of Millville, and is appointed by the planning board. The board of selection or town manager appoints the alternate, and they must be a resident of Millville. And so, right now, the planning board delegate is Pam, and the board of selection alternate is Bill.
Um, and then, if this was in the letter or not, I missed it, but the attending these meetings do equate to time that we can use with CMR PC as well?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
I might, I don't know if it, I don't think it gets into that in this form, but yeah, depending on.
Hour if you go.
Yeah, depending on participation, it can bring more local planning assistance hours to your community, which are good for, you know, if a CMR PC staff member wants to help with a small project that doesn't have a grant attached, you know, looking over some things minor or something like that for a few hours, that would be a way to increase the amount of LPA hours.
Yep, which we've used for both the reason that Gabe mentioned, as well as for planning assistance, like having Gabe here right now. So, I'm not so sure if the board of selectmen didn't already hold their vote on the alternate, but we need to hold our appointment of the delegate. So again, it's just those four meetings. It does help us out as a board. So I guess I'm looking to see if anybody might be interested in doing that for this next fiscal year.
What time are the meetings, those quarterly meetings held, and like, how long are they?
The last one, like, I think it started at either 6:30 or 7:00, and it was just over an hour long.
And I'm not sure how they are in non-remote years, but this would probably continue to be primarily remote, at least for this fiscal year, I would expect.
Are they on specific days? Are they a fixed schedule, or how's that work?
Yeah, so it's a fixed schedule. These quarterly meetings are September 10th, November 12th, January 14th, and March 11th, so that would be September of the past month, November, and so Pam was at that meeting.
Those are, yeah, those are Thursdays, I believe, Justin.
Yeah, they're Thursdays.
Yep.
And yeah, I've been on one, or a couple, and yeah, it's only about an hour or two hours. And they start, I believe, at like 6:30 or 7:00 PM.
Okay, I can do that. I can do that. I can make that.
Anybody have any opposition to nominating Justin to be our CMR PC delegate?
Nope.
All right. Is this something we take a vote on, Gabe, or do we just take the volunteer?
Um, I'm not sure what the procedure is, but I don't think it can hurt to have a vote.
All right, well, I make a motion for Justin Allen to be our CMR PC delegate for the 2020, 2021 fiscal year.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, Justin.
Thank you.
All right, um, we want to talk a little bit about the shared planner discussion that's been ongoing. The last, we haven't actually had a conversation about this with the other towns or with CMR PC in several weeks, but on our last meeting, we did kinda get into a little bit more detail about how it would work from an hours and money standpoint. And Chris, I believe you were on the call with me, right?
Yeah.
So feel free to to jump in on this discussion as well, in terms of kind of bringing the information to everybody.
I mean, I love to, I love the idea. I love the idea. The cost, I don't know how we do it with the budget that we have. But maybe, you guys know better than I do.
Yeah.
I know just the numbers, it was like, at the low end, it was like 19.5 a year roughly, and at the high end, it was like 22.5. And I think our whole budget is like 14, so, you know, it's kind of.
No, it's a little bit different than that. We, I mean, we have a little bit more than that, but the, the salary line item is like 14.9 or something like that. That I had asked at the beginning of these conversations, I was very open with them and explained to them exactly where we were at. I'm not sure how other towns find more money in line items to do things, but when the conversation came down to it at our last meeting, Chris is exactly right, that the numbers were a lot higher for what we were asking for, which was that 10 to 12 hours a week, assistance with our meetings, pretty much what we had in our job description. The last thing they did say to us is that if money was an issue, we could look at less time and maneuver some things around. They felt like one of the towns could use some additional hours, so it would, wouldn't be like adding more to the job. It would just be rearranging the percentage of hours that each town gets. But I think in order for us to make that, to make that work, we were looking at somewhere around like seven hours, I think, to to make the numbers work out, and in which case, I had some concerns about is seven hours enough? Seven hours when they're spending all this other time on two other towns gonna actually, what's that gonna mean for Millville? Anyway, I just wasn't sure. It wasn't, it was a significant enough percentage of the time to make it worth looking at. I don't know. I wanted to see what you guys thought, and Chris, I know you and I haven't been able to talk about this, so I'm curious to hear what your thoughts were.
Honestly, I had the same, I had the same thought, and I do remember them saying that, you know, we could do less hours, but I mean, I don't know that, I mean, maybe Gabe or somebody else could shed a little more light, but I'm in agreement. Like, I feel like six or seven hours a week, is that really? Are we gonna get everything that we need, be able to logically get everything that we need? You know, and how much stuff isn't gonna be getting done because we don't have the money, we don't have the allotted time?
Well, and to be honest, too, the other towns, in in trying to figure out how they were gonna make it work with like 15 hours here or 20 hours there, they all were like, well, we, we have admin help, and I'm like, we don't have admin help. So this would have to be our admin help and our, our planner, or we'd be bringing in somebody to provide us planning expertise, and we'd be having to figure out the admin piece of it, which again, there'd be no money left to hire somebody and and what that looks like anyway. So I don't know. I, I felt a little stuck after that meeting. I was, I was, I was honestly disappointed, because I know, in being on a couple of the earlier calls, it felt like everything was kind of lining up to have it make a lot of sense for us. But then after that last one, I'm, I'm not sure. And and of course, we're past the ability to go and figure out how we could add more money into a budget. I don't know, even if that was to to happen, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
It puts us back kind of at ground zero for looking for a planner, though.
Mm-hmm. And unfortunately, this way, we know we're gonna be back here again in six to eight months. Even if we get somebody, it, you know, it's gonna be a short thing. We're just gonna get them rolling, get them up to speed, and then time to find another one.
Yeah.
Which is why this CMR PC deal seems like it would be a really good thing, but obviously, the budget's not there, so if the budget isn't there, it's not there in this. Our hands are kinda tied.
Yeah. What was attractive to me about the prospect of working with the other towns was the, the fact that we could get somebody that was dedicated to planning, that could really kind of help with some of that technical assistance that we need, but maybe even some of that big picture thinking that we haven't had in years. That, that's a big piece that I think that we're missing from time to time, right now, anyway. So I, I like the idea of that. And to Chris's point, I mean, the other two, the other two options we have are to go back to the drawing board, looking for a part-time or, you know, low-time planner of our own to fill those needs, which we've been struggling with. Or I think we could resume some conversations with Peter about combining the position with his admin needs, but then I think you're not gonna get somebody who has planning expertise.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a term for the buy-in to the shared planner? Like how, like how long would the, would that agreement go?
That's a, it's a good question. I don't think we've really gotten all that far in the discussions. So, but I'm sure, because it would be a, in a, a shared agreement, that there would be some terms and then an opportunity to look at it again.
And I imagine that for it to be, you know, equitable for the other towns that are involved, we would have to maintain our share of that commitment for that term.
I mean, I would imagine it's something like that, but again, they're, they're slicing and dicing the piece up to make a full 40-hour position. So if we go into a commitment and we say, well, for year one, we can only afford six, seven hours, whatever it is, and they rearrange everything in order to make that work. If in a year, we had the money to, to say, hey, we want more hours of it, they might not be willing to give up their three hours to make up the difference. I mean, we might not be able to grow with that position for, for a long period of time, having to not start out at the level that we know we need.
I mean, an efficient seven hours a week, you know, might be worth, you know, 10 or 12 hours a week, you know, if we were to get somebody who is maybe not qualified, and it might give us an opportunity to kind of, and I don't know, really kick the decision down the road, but allow us to, you know, to maybe budget for something, you know, something more, or, you know, whatever.
That's a very fair position, you know, we, it's been a long time since we've had an efficient person in that position. And I know even, even with the last planner that we had in the building, part of the trouble is, you, you bring on a new person, and it's, where are these files? So we don't have a decent filing system, and we can't find what we're looking for. And so the seven hours a week that you're expecting to use for the things that we need are spent looking for a piece of paper, or, you know, figuring out a process that we don't have. So there, there is some of that, too.
Uh, Gabe?
Yes.
Are there, are there recommendations for like, planning department filing systems? Is that something that, that we can kind of?
I guess there's best practices.
Yeah.
I could certainly reach out to, to people in my agency, as well as a couple town planners I work with. I'm not totally sure what those best practices would be, but if there's another town, you could emulate. That would probably be a good decision.
Yeah, I would be, I would be willing to put in some organizational work if it meant, you know, kind of providing, you know, a concrete base for, you know, a, you know, little hour a week planner to be able to maximize that person's efficiency.
And are you thinking?
So that they're spending, so that they're spending those hours on planning skills and planning tasks instead of administrative type of, you know, where is this file, where is this, you know, et cetera.
And then, sorry, are you thinking that would be using the shared planner position? Or with like someone new, who would have like this position combined with the town administrator, or something like that?
Well, I think whatever it is that we do, having a fixed-up file system is better than anybody. I mean, Brian, you probably can specifically speak to this. I haven't seen what's over there, but I, I think that's a, I think a little effort to fix some of it up, or to figure out whether it's possible to scan some of those things in and have a digital file that was easier for us to access, or anything that's gonna make it a little bit better.
Yeah, definitely. I, you know, I've been in the files of the planning department a couple planners ago, and it was basically set up for her filing system. And I guess it worked for her. Is there any method to it? I really don't know. But it, it seemed to work when we had that, that player in the seating. But definitely, you know, anyone that's committed since, temporary or that we brought on, just had a hard time putting their hands on a lot of documentation. But in all fairness, we all know what happened last time, as much. And people in the building weren't allowed in the building, and papers came in, and no one knows where they went. So there's a lot of pieces here, in my opinion, that are not put together properly, properly, and they do need to be organized. I kind of agree with Justin. You know, seven hours of that are, could be spent doing what they're supposed to do, would be better than having someone do 12 hours or 19, you know, 15 hours. I personally think we shouldn't even entertain the shared position with, within the town hall anymore. I think we need to either make the decision and push forward with the shared planner with the other towns, or we have to seriously try again to get our own person in place again. And I, I think we had some good candidates last time. We hired. I don't think they knew the dynamics of Millville, because they, you know, some of them were looking for, thought we had admin support and different things, but again, I think we've had some potential candidates. They were all looking for those hours. And I think that's what we're gonna find, is somebody who's retired, or just, you know, looking to come back if we go to that avenue again.
Well, the other piece that makes this a little bit different, and I, I don't know who amongst us could could see to the sustainability of this virtual setup, but you know, some of the other candidates that we've seen in the past didn't necessarily wanna travel as far as Millville, they realized where we were, but that's not as much, I guess, of an issue right now. Or I know, you know, even when we were talking about the shared planner, it's not, it's not a planner position that would be in Millville necessarily that whole time. We can designate some hours with that, with a shared planner position for them to be in our building, to, you know, collect paperwork and things like that, but it sounds like some of those hours might be done from another building. And I think that being open to that type of thinking, or even if we went the route of looking for our own planner, you know, did you want somebody that can be in Millville four days a week? Or do you want somebody who can be there for the hours that they need to be there and get the job done from wherever it is they can get the job done? On the other times, might make it more attractive.
Yeah, and with the days email and as long as they can be reached by phone, and set up an appointment with somebody, maybe. The other towns, did they say when they were, did I miss, did they say when they were looking to, they were looking to do this fiscal year or next?
They were looking to do this as soon as possible. So.
I mean, as a, as a third option, and I don't even know if this is an option or if it makes sense, like, for the time being, you know, would it be worth looking at, like, CMR PC, just to kinda keep somebody like Gabe around for a while and get through the next couple of months, and see where things lay, and then at that point, figure out what our next step is, I mean. Clearly, I think by that point, just to ship the sales with the current town, shared, try this again, shared plan, shared town leader position, with the agreement, because they'll probably be, you know, up and running by that point. But who knows, if something else, you know, come in at a later date, or.
We could kick the can down the road a little bit with this. The difference being, having CMR PC onboard is more expensive than having our own planner onboard. So whether the funds would be there to bring somebody else on at that point, or what would we be looking at in terms of dollars on, on that side, we'd have to sit down and do some forecasting, but I'm not sure it would be ideal at that point. I also know that Trish had expressed to me that CMR PC folks were reaching limited availability, and they were kind of encouraging us to look for some internal solutions. And this was a good temporary mandate, but not a sustainable solution. Gabe, if you can speak to whether or not that's changed, but I think that that's availability of people, or having to onboard somebody new every six weeks also, if that ends up being the case, can, can also set us back a bit.
Hmm.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy with the current arrangement. I have no complaints. I can't speak to the fiscal feasibility of the position, but if we're talking about something through the end of the year, that's fine. But I, I do know in CMR PC, like, we are, from what I've heard, it sounds like the shared planner position is favored, just in general. And I was wondering, have you brought these concerns to that, to that body with the, with the other towns?
Yeah, let them know about the financial piece of it anyway.
Yeah.
We haven't had any further discussions about like, how long the, this would be for, or anything like that. I mean, the, to put the pros and the cons, I mean, bringing, it would be a lot faster to continue down the road of looking at a shared planner, even if it was for limited hours. And I think the level of planner that we would be able to bring on through that process would be higher than we'd be able to, to necessarily find on our own, you know, having gone through this process a couple of times now, anyway. It seems like that would be a more attractive position. And we also benefit from the person's proximity to us and working in neighboring towns and having some knowledge of, at least our area. You know, we're not gonna be looking at somebody who's not gonna understand where Millville is at that point.
And anything beyond that, hopefully, it'll get somebody that will last for a while. We're not gonna be going through this again in six months, or, or less, because they found a better, higher position, which is totally unsustainable.
Yeah, I, I think my concern is just that if we realize that we need more, if that amount of time isn't enough, do we have the flexibility to figure out how to get more? Or at that point, would we be saying, well, how can we get some admin hours on, on another side? Increase this person's ability to do more, higher-level planning stuff, and find somebody else to do some of the admin side? I guess that could be a possibility, too. I guess that's a road we need to walk down when we get there, but.
Hmm.
If, if you started looking, in my opinion, I just said that I don't think we should look at the shared position within our town dynamics like we were in the past, but if you were gonna do admin support, I think you'd be better using a shared position then within the town, the town hall. And the reason I say that is because I think you're gonna progress to finding someone with planning experience and who's gonna be admin support for another department wanna do that piece of it.
Yeah, I agree.
So if, you know, we did the shared planner, I think we could, you know, entertain with town administrator and maybe, you know, the finance committee and, you know, show that some admin support's gonna be used, which is gonna add to the planning board, but in reality, it would add to the town hall budget. But with that, I'd just say be careful, because then it doesn't show the planning board, and it could be taken away at any time.
Yeah, and I, I don't think it's anything that we're gonna need right away. I just think, I'm, I'm thinking down the line. I'm thinking what Chris was thinking earlier, is it sucks to have to do this every six months, and how do we figure out a, a sustainable solution? And I think, I'm trying to talk myself into thinking that if we go with the shared planner route, that it's not gonna be an obvious solution if we need to grow. It might not be with that person, but we could rearrange the responsibilities possibly, if it gets to the point where we need to, we need to figure that piece out.
We might find that the seven hours with the planner is enough. And four hours of admin, or six hours of admin a week is not what the planner needs to be doing anyway.
Yeah.
And have a cost savings, there's a, paying the number, what'd you say, 20 to 22?
Nineteen, but yeah, 20, 20 to 22.
Yeah.
A year, I mean, maybe we can keep it, get it down to, it'll be 15 or 18, with admin and paying shared power of planning for so many hours a week.
Yeah, yeah. All right, so.
It's funny, I kinda thought this shit. It's funny, I kind of thought this shit would kind of like funk, you know, it was like after that last call, there's no way we can make this work. Like, you know, it's gonna even make sense to entertain it, but.
Well, I don't know, I mean, I think, I think it's worth it to ask anyway. I mean, I suppose that, you know, they could turn around and say, no, you know, we don't think we can get anybody for that. I mean, our, our financial limits puts a cap on what the most is that we can offer this person as they start getting to the point of finding somebody they want to bring on and reduces their ability to negotiate, I think, salary and things like that. But, um, but I don't think it's outside of, I don't think it's outside of what we're looking at. I think it's a possibility, you know, and we could certainly continue this conversation with them and be super upfront about our financial predicament and what our expectations are and that we are willing to look at less hours and see where it goes.
Hello, do you know, is there a, is there a follow-up meeting scheduled or, and there was a soft call or email the other day or whatever? Maybe it was two weeks ago, I don't, I don't remember what it was, but.
Yeah, I believe that they did have some schedules. I know the last thing I saw, I think he was following up with somebody from Mendon to make sure they were okay with it. And they were looking for some feedback on the job description. But I think that would probably be it right now. We could obviously submit some other questions and have more of a discussion. But I'm not sure there was a lot of things to further discuss until they kind of got buy-in from everyone. You know, one of the other questions that they'd asked me, and I did, I did reach out, was do we have selectmen support for being able to put this shared agreement into place? I reached out to both the town administrator and I sent an email off to the board of selectmen to let them know that we were doing this. And I haven't heard anything, so I'm not feeling that there's opposition to it anyway, but it's feasible.
Would anybody know the process for getting some additional funding if we tried to get additional hours through the shared planning on the program?
Outside of budgeted agreements?
Like, how could we get more money to put toward it?
Yeah, from the town. That way, we'd probably be able to make a more informed decision whether we're going to try and hire our own or if we're gonna try and have a fair shot at what we need. I mean, it's almost six, seven hours and then a meeting, you know. It would kind of go quick if we could pry a few dollars out of the coffers maybe and make a more reasonable attempt to get involved in that.
I think it's a very reasonable ask. I don't know what the process is, but we could, we could reach out to the town administrator and finance director and ask.
Yeah, I believe that'd be a budgetary item, my knowledge, unless, unless the town administrator's got a line item for something like that. But unfortunately, we may have just missed that, that bolt for the year with the special town meeting that just went by.
Yeah.
The budgets were set.
Oh, oh, we have a situation that comes up now and we have the ability to get involved in this program. So things change, right? So now if we need a little extra money, they must have a process to take it out of the bank so the people just don't know what that process is.
Yeah, I think it's worth asking. I mean, the other thing is that we're not starting at the beginning of the year. So I think there are some funds that we did just look to see if we have, what funds we have, how far that would get us. And at what point can we, you know, would we be in the middle of our budgeting process? And we can go and make the case that we need to change things. We also, so all that being said too, the dollars that we're looking at right now in this conversation are the dollars on the line item for salary. Our planning department has a few other line items with not a ton, but some dollars in it that may or may not have been spent to this point that I think we need to look at too. Because, I mean, in the whole, in the whole, I mean, we have the whole budget to work with, not just that one line. All right, so it sounds to me, and just jump in if I'm saying this wrong, but it sounds to me like we'd all be okay with digging a little bit further, reaching out to the town and finding out what the process would be for extra funds should we need, if there is an ability to do that or not. And learning a little bit more about, if we continue with the shared planner process with a lesser hours commitment, could we make that work? And then asking a little bit more of the terms of what the agreement would look like. Does that sound like I'm recapping what everyone's thinking?
Yeah.
I think it's fair.
Yes.
All right.
Great.
But I'll continue in that fashion. And in the meantime, I like Justin's idea of taking a look at the filing system and seeing if there's anything, there's anything we might be able to do to make it a little bit easier for anybody who might be coming into that position, whether it's even just Gabe needing to go find something or, you know, a more permanent solution to what we're looking at. Does everybody else think that's a good idea too?
Yeah.
I don't mind helping out with that, Justin, if you don't mind maybe spearheading, trying to figure out when we could go in and take a look.
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't, I don't mind. Yeah, we'll touch base offline and figure out, you know, when we can, when we can do that.
Okay. All right, so that's how we move on.
Is there, is there a way that we can get, you know, like, after-hours access to buildings to be able to do that?
Yeah, we'd have to reach out and ask, I'm not sure.
Yeah. I mean, I know that the town hall is still unlimited hours and, you know, my days are pretty booked. But, you know, I'm willing to, you know, to do a couple hours a night a week or something like that.
I am no filing expert, but, and I know the town hall, like you said, is on hours. But if you get permission from the town administrator, it'll give you a timeframe to go in. I do have access to get in at that point. I don't know, like I said, I'm no person to be filing, but.
Okay, well.
Moral of the story.
I can ask, when I reach out to the town administrator about the budget piece, I'll also ask if we can get permission to come in maybe one evening to look at the planning filing system. And Brian, you could let us in, at least show us where it is, and then we can attack it.
Yeah, I'm sure I can find something to do or help with, but.
Okay.
And I'll reach out to Sarah and some other people at my agency to see if there's any sort of best practices I can get at you guys.
That would be super helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah, if I could give you assistance, you know, file and stuff, I'm more than happy to jump in. But not being spot too many people, undesertive, so.
Gotcha. Okay.
Yeah, I don't know where, with live, how many people to have, I think I've got a call, call meeting.
Oh, yeah.
I think it's three, so just like we had the other day. So if it might be Brian, then we ask you to open the door and then ask you to let us back out later.
Okay.
We'll see. I'm sure that there's other things that, I mean, if we had to, I suppose we could call like executive session and just clean up the files. You know, it's not like we're going to be talking about open cases.
I could find other things to do, you know, rock, if it's annoying there.
Yeah. All right, moving on, applications, what do we have, Gabe?
There are no new applications.
That was easy.
Yep.
All right, can you talk a little bit about this next one, the Town of Millville Continuity of Operations Plan?
Um, yes, I can. So we received a letter from Chief of Police Landry in July that came to my, that came to the planning department earlier this month. And basically, they needed, I, I'm not totally sure what the purpose of this is, but it seems that they want contacts and basically just to establish who the personnel of the planning department are. And then contacts in cases of emergency so that, you know, if there's some sort of natural disaster or something, they know who to reach out to. And, you know, if people aren't available, kind of like a phone tree, to see who else to contact. And so they, basically, there's a bunch of different categories. I think this might make the most sense for me to scan this when I'm on Thursday. Because there's a few different categories and I think with the, I'm not sure exactly how to approach this with the questions we've had about the planning department and then like how the structure going forward. But for the time being, it might just make the most sense to have contacts from the planning board.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. Well, when you can scan and send it to us and we can, we can either fill it out because we'll understand it when we see it or it becomes something that we need to discuss, we can bring that up in the next meeting.
Yeah, it seems pretty straightforward. It's just, you know, various administrative questions and just who to main contact, like who the emergency contact should be for the, for the planning board.
Okay.
Cool. And Justin, I'm going to send you, you know, there's some information that I need for the delegate appointment.
Okay.
Yeah, straightforward.
Yeah, sure.
All right, you have business certificates. Do we have some more of those to look at, Gabe?
Yeah, I just have one. And if, if it would be helpful, I can get this later this week, but it should be, as we discussed last time, it should be straightforward. This is a true impact, owned by Steven Snyder, located at 320 Chestnut Hill Road.
What kind of business is it?
True and impact.
What, does it say what he does or what it is?
It doesn't have any information about, I can, I'll take a look. But it's a consulting business that's been around since 2002 with one employee at the site of business, which I assume is Steven Snyder. It's a home occupation, no chemicals on the premises of a storage of fuel on the premises.
Okay. And again, I remember this came up last time and I'm not remembering what we decided, but this is, this is sort of like informative, we're not needing to take any action on these.
So basically, if you think that this is a good, that this is a valid home occupation with no, with no issues, I can just bring this to Diane on Thursday.
Does anybody have any thoughts or questions about that? It seems pretty straightforward.
Yeah. All right, well, I'll bring this in.
Um, do you have any other updates, Gabe?
I believe you were copied on the email, but there was a requisition form that was sent to the planning department, I believe from the town administrator. But I don't believe that we have much use for that.
Okay, I don't remember seeing that one.
Okay.
I'll take a look after and see if, it was like, just looking for additional information?
Yeah, I believe so. I may have sent it to myself on my CMRPC email, but. Yeah, you were, you were, yeah, it's a capital request survey.
I did get that, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, I don't think, as a planning board, I don't think we have any capital requests that we need to submit that the deadline is coming up. Should we have any? Really can't think of one for us that would make sense.
Yeah, it's for like, as you guys know, like it says car billing equipment.
Yeah. I suppose maybe once we take a look at those files, we'll know if we. All right, yeah, I did see that. I'll just respond back that we don't have any. Any other updates or any other planning board member topics you want to talk about?
Next meeting?
Next meeting, so I've been just sticking with the, the former second Tuesday, second and fourth Mondays scheduled for now, six thirty.
Nine and then the twenty-third?
Yes.
Perfect.
Okay. I figure that's, that's easy and we don't have to fight for Zoom meeting.
I have a question, is there any more conversation with the engineers from the five blocks of the village on Chestnut Hill Road?
I haven't seen anything come across from that, have you, Gabe? That was the Afonso.
Yeah, I put them in touch with the, with their, I guess, TEC is the company. And I got, I spoke with both parties, so they should be in contact with each other about invoicing. I haven't heard from them in a couple of weeks. I do have one more item, it came in last minute and didn't get on the agenda. But there was this question for the, what's the, blanking on the name, the carriage bond?
Yeah.
So we just need to have a vote to release the bond to the town treasurer.
And weren't they waiting on like the title to come back, the title search to come back in before?
They looked to do that. I don't remember that, but.
Yeah, I'm not sure that that's 100% clear either. But it's on the agenda, so we'll have the table at the next meeting.
Yeah, we can't vote on it tonight anyway because it's not on the agenda. But I was on some correspondence related to that and I thought they were just waiting, they were waiting on some additional information before they were willing to consider to release the bond anyway. So we can, this is the next meeting.
Okay.
And I couldn't be wrong reading so many different things. There's something about a solar, something solar that they're at somewhere anywhere around.
Yeah, you were CC'd on that. Let me pull up this email. And luckily, Sarah Adams also has done a lot of work on solar, so she's had, she had some insight. We discussed it, I believe it was last Friday. Where do you find those?
I found it, it was say 148 Thayer Street.
Yep.
And 110 Thayer Street.
And so what's tricky about this is that in the current bylaws, there is only, there's only regulation for large-scale solar. There's no regulation listed for accessory use small-scale solar. Um, let me. Yeah, I have an email from Sarah that was clarifying on this.
So by small-scale solar, you're talking about like solar to power like a neighborhood or something like that?
Under, it's under a certain voltage and my understanding is this would be onsite, an onsite solar, onsite solar equipment to power like onsite stuff. And so it would be like an accessory use to the farm farming that they're also proposing. But there's no definition in the use table about how accessory non-residential uses are treated in the Villarresidential District. But there's no definition in the use table about how accessory non-residential uses are treated in the village residential district. Um, and then related to the development, but separate from the solar question, we may wanna consider the hemp processing as an industrial use requiring a special permit. So there's a couple questions, um, from what I've heard, um, for solar specifically under the Mass General Law, um, their towns are not supposed to unduly regulate solar, and so since this is onsite small-scale solar, um, a frame of reference that might be useful is if other houses have had solar panels built and how it was treated by the planning board. Um, so that would be like, if we have precedent for how that's been treated in the past, that would be the most useful way to approach this, because I think it's fairly equivalent to a, a house having a solar panel.
We don't, we don't have any precedent for that, correct?
Another thing to keep in mind that I spoke with Sarah about is to keep the, the opinion of the building department, um, in your mind on this matter, um, how we used to treat his lawyer in the past.
Do we have, do we have information from Lincoln how that's been handled in the past?
Um, I can reach out to him.
Yeah.
I saw, I saw he was, uh, CC'd on it, very spoken to the building commissioner, but he, uh, passed it to the planning board, so.
Yeah, I see the note here where he's passing it off to us, um, but I'm not sure that, I'm not sure. I guess his question is, would this require a special permit from us, is that?
Yeah, or if it's prohibited outright, because in the, in the bylaws, as he says, any use not enumerated is prohibited.
One of those addresses again, Thayer Street?
One ten, um, and one, I lost it, one forty-eight and one ten. And this was in relation to another project, I think that's what I'm missing on here.
Yeah, so it's related to a hemp farming and processing, um.
Business?
Business, yeah. And so that's the other question, is if we would count this as an industrial development requiring a special permit anyway, um, the solar panels separately, um, I, yeah, I don't know, I'm not clear how to treat that without precedent for Millville.
Yeah, I, I guess I'm not a hundred percent sure on how to move forward with that either, I would appreciate if, um, if Sarah wouldn't mind weighing in anywhere and, uh, with her.
I'll reach out to her again, and I'll see if we can get you a more solid answer at the next meeting.
Okay. I mean, in, in just looking at this, it seems like this is the type of thing we probably should be considering, so, um, I guess we'd be looking for, I'd be curious anyway if there's, if there's a way to do it, if it's not something that we have in our bylaws. Okay.
I have one little over there, um, uh, if you want to pack or, this is ours, we'll, we'll leave here, we can sign, uh, so one person, we got significant priority, uh, um. I don't know, is that registered here or?
Yep.
I can't catch you on the, uh, oxygen usage signature, um, uh, the park.
The Memorial Park project.
Right, um, I don't know, because at the next meeting after that, that just shows up for the driving, um, that, I guess, city over there, or, as I said, they were presented, you know, the, I don't remember, gee, I remember putting, uh, any, ask, I get a, uh, meeting, but I, I just don't get it.
Yeah, that's a great question, um, so, I think you had brought it to our attention, but we didn't have any materials about what it was for, um, and I think maybe we need to invite somebody from the Memorial Park project to come talk to us about whatever it is that they need, because we've never heard from them directly either.
Right. I, I still have a copy of the plan, it was just a lot of lines, I get the plan, uh, when I get to the first seventy's, and, um, it's been old, had a media, AR, locks, everything, which was a, a whole lot of offers by the last station, and a little bit of lock, and maybe probably a lot of, yeah, I agree that, um, we can get, you know, it may never be, our parks be, uh, definitely, it's like, follow through, I guess, it's still a little, for everything that happened in the park.
Okay, yeah, I think that makes sense, um, Gabe, maybe we can put that on our next agenda, and Brian, do you have a contact there that he can reach out to, to invite to, to join us at our next meeting? Um, because if, if it's, if it's something simple, we just need to kinda look over, um, and they just need a signature, we should be able to kinda move that along.
I'm making sure, I'm hearing on, there's a meeting?
Yep.
I'm making sure I copy that, I need to put a new test again.
Great, can you, um, just repeat the name of the plan, I couldn't, your audio, I couldn't really hear you.
Um, we're in a park, uh, trusty, the soldiers were in a park, some of the, um, kind of wood, um, and area wood, you could have, I guess, uh, with signs or get registered, or registration fees, but, uh, I'll get a contact before you, before you, uh, before you, like, on the, they think it's a, like, uh, uh.
Great.
Good. Okay. Um. The only other thing I was, I wanted to follow up on was, I had received a CMRPC email a couple weeks ago, and they were looking at, for properties that, um, had trails but didn't have maps to be part of a project, um, and so I, I did reach out to Gabe to see if we could possibly become part of that project with the, the trails on the King property, um, I'm not sure if, if you had any update on that?
I did not have any update on that, but I'll, um, I'll try to get an update for the next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't know if there's any other properties in town that you guys know that have trails that aren't mapped that we could get to be a part of this project, um, but I thought it seemed like a, a smart thing to look into.
And what's other property you're interested in?
So, the property is the, I believe it's called the King property, and it's right behind the elementary school off of Berthellet.
Great.
Alright, does anybody have anything else?
Nope.
Alright, so the next meeting will be on?
November ninth.
Thank you, November ninth at six thirty, um, we'll see you all then, a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Okay, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright. I haven't gotten any.
Have a good night, bye.